And we taught them this prayer, God is great, God is good. Bow with me this morning as, as we pray and as we speak to God. God, help us to love more. God, help us to be good to others. And God, let us be great in our service to those who need us most. Thank you, God, for being the God of love, the God of greatness, and the God of all that is good. Amen.
Thank you for those words of encouragement, Dr. Bryan. Everyone please stand, join me in the face of the nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, will you bow? Here?
Here.
I'm here.
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 Here. Here. Here.
Here!
Next is item four, approval of the agenda. Okay. And item eight, A five. Concept of interest resolution statement. And then the board received a resolution and a explanation. Came about as the result of a request from Saks of his deal and was submitted is in process now. That, that is showing on mine is six, but we will renumber that as item eight, A five. Everybody will make a note of that. That's the, the resolution in the statement. Very good. Any questions about the agenda, any other additions? Can I entertain a motion?
Motion that we approve the agenda with the correction of addition.
Motion by Mr. Davis, if there's second. Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda with that one addition, signify by raising your hand or voice.
Aye.
Thank you, Senator. Those opposed? The agenda's approved. The next, item five, approval of minutes of the last regular meeting on August 12th, 2015. Everyone's been sent a copy of the minutes. Have a chance to review those, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes from the last regular meeting on August 12th.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smith, it's the second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion? Any questions about the minutes? There being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please raise your hand and signify by my voice by Ms. Boyd, join us by teleconference.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved from the last regular meeting. Item six, public comment. Secretary, we, no one's registered or signed up for that. Item seven, I recommend approval for seven, A, one through ten. Every... Items of section seven, A, one through ten. Is there a motion to approve these items? Motion by Ms. Brown, sir second.
Second.
Questions, discussion?
Well, I just have one question in regards to the bond refunding. There's an escrow trust agreement in place, and we're pretty sure that we're probably able to...
Yes, sir. Yes, the escrow question has been approved by us, the bond council's also been approved by the paying agent, which will hold the escrow, and by the, and the numbers have been approved by both PFM's financial advisor and the banks that are providing the funds.
And I believe most of all these items were covered in our work session at the last, after the last meeting. Any other discussions on items seven, A, one through ten? There being none once again under seven, A, one through ten, we have a Bevel State bond refunding, Faulkner State Associate Program and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Airframe Technology. Item three, Faulkner State Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Award in Avionics Technology. Item four, Faulkner State Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree and Certificate Appropriate Award in Power Plant Technology. Item five, Northwest Shoals Community College, additional authorization on a construction project. Item six, Wallace State Community College Hansville, addition of instructional site. Item seven, George Corley Wallace State Community College Selma, addition of instructional sites. Item eight, Alabama Community College System Institutions, 2015-16 budgets. Item nine, Alabama Community College Office, 2015-16 budget. Item 10, Alabama Community College System, allocation of 2015-16, industry certification, certification initiative funds. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand or give a voice sign.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those motions are approved. I recommend approval of eight, A, and one through five. Standing at item five, the concept of interest resolution. Is there a motion from the board to approve items eight, A, one through five? So moved by Mr. Davis, is there second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Conroy. Any discussion? Were the suggestions at least bring it, put into place on item one? I think one thing was just, you know, certificate of insurance, a couple of things I think on that list.
Oh, yeah, I know everything that's been done on that with the perches, you know, state no reason, like the guarantee for porn is started.
Any further discussion on items eight, A, one through five? Once again, we're voting on eight, A, one through five, they are item one, Central Alabama Community College Lease Agreement. Item two, Faulkner State Community College Naming Facility. Item three, Marion Military Institute Board of Advisors Membership. Item four, Shelton State Community College Acceptance of Donation of Land. Item five, of the Alabama Community College Assistant Board of Trustees, Conflict of Interest Resolution Statement. If there being no further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried.
Just from an informational standpoint, so you're, you're aware, I have accepted the resignation of two presidents since we last met. Dr. Doug Littles from Reed State and Dr. Henry Mayfield from Shelton State. We, we, we have the room's ready to go, so we'll check, just wanted to be aware of that. Time to change, right? Okay, on to the orientation items. Very good. Mr. Barnes is going to provide a, a construction update that, that I think pegs what he's already done.
By the picture, eh?
Mr. Barnes, if you need to pull that lecture back, I think we moved it to the end occasion, and if it's not, if that's better for you for the presentation, feel free to do that.
Thank you so much. Good morning, thank y'all very much for your time. We got a big state, we have a lot of buildings around the state, and I know y'all haven't seen them all. And the purpose of this update today is just to let y'all see what's going on around the state. Right away, I want to apologize to any president that didn't have a building represented here today, I just took pictures that I had on hand that were readily available. Don't attach any reports for whether or not your picture of one of your buildings was shown. We have great challenges in the state. Alabama Community College System has 26 colleges with 89 instructional sites, over 850 buildings, 12.6 million square feet under roof. That, that's a gorgeous building there, that's at Faulkner State, that's Memorial Hall, it's about two-year-old building. That type building attracts students. Nice facilities are a great marketing tool. Now, we can't compete with the four years, but let me tell you, they're spending money like there's no tomorrow on facilities. They really have beautiful facilities, and recently I spent a day at University of Alabama of their facilities group, and it's just amazing the things they're doing, Auburn the same thing. They, they understand the importance of attracting students by having good facilities, so we'll show you what we've done around the state, we don't have their budgets, we don't have football teams, but we're doing a real good job, and I just wanted y'all to be aware of it. 60% of our existing inventory is built before 1975, before energy codes, before ADA standards, before the internet. So we got a lot of old buildings that we tried to update to make them work. A lot of these buildings were the typical, what we call trade school buildings. So the following examples of high distant buildings can be renovated. This is a Gadsden State, this building originally was used for carpentry course, then later was abandoned, and then became a shipping and receiving, mostly it was just like a storage facility. This school was in desperate need of a one-stop center, and this one-stop center was going to be the first building that people would see when they came on campus as new students, so it'd be important to be attractive and also very functional, so I'll just show you what we did with that. That's the app. Gorgeous approach to the campus and to this building, and once you get inside, it's a core. That's the, that's the app. In, you can see where it's just a storage facility, that's the way it looks today, that's, that's not a computer-generated photograph, that's a real, real photograph. Absolutely stunning example of what can be done with existing facilities. You don't always have to build a new building. Northwest Shoals, we got a project building in 110, needs to be totally gutted and reassigned for new requirements. And I want you to pay attention to the sidewalk here that goes north and south. In a previous facilities management plan, architectural firm came up with some good suggestions about tying the campus together, so when we renovated building 110, which... Notice the difference in the sidewalk, the grid border, and the landscaping, that goes all the way through the campus. It makes it a pedestrian campus, it's really a, a really great idea, and at the other end is another brand-new building, which I didn't have a photograph on, new college building that's just been completed. So now you can walk right through all the way through the campus, you know, people are, it's very, very nice. Building 110 is the same building, it's gutted, repurposed, with a nice entrance on it, nice landscaping, preferred to make it more appealing, more attractive. Right, same campus, another building, I mean, this, we got hundreds of them like this. That's the app. Again, nice landscaping, nice sidewalks, easy for students to get there, I think since this time they put some outdoor furniture there, so makes a nice gathering spot for today. Again, we're still at Northwest Shoals. Can't believe the difference, I mean, I'm walking in this building, I might be afraid, you go through the door. But now look at that, how inviting is that? Notice also all the walkway, nice lamps, the lamp is all the way through the campus, of course, every landscape has had a huge difference. This is possible with the existing building. Alabama Southern, down in Monroe, this, this is actually an apple shot, bottom of the floor. They put a standing steam metal roof on it, put pile aspers on the corners and on the building, and heavy columns out front, changed the whole appearance of the building. Same old building, but it looks brand-new and very modern, and very appealing. In, we're at Monroe, Alabama Southern. Starving difference, that's the app. Now, top, the dome, that's a recreation of the same dome that's at the County Courthouse in Monroe, where Kilo Machenberg, the story, Kilo Machenberg, they duplicated that, nice stuff. Bishop State, this is the existing building, that's typical trade school architecture. Look at it now, really, really nice. Wallace Hansville, still a building, it's been completely redone, renovated, that was before on the interior, imagination, look at it now. Very welcoming spaces that would make someone proud of their school and want to attend their school. Bishop State, that college town, have a little flat roof, really changed the appearance. In, that's an app, much more inviting, you can find your way easily into the building, okay? This is an old Chrysler building that Calhoun owns in Huntsville. Four, after the renovation, deep starving, when you go, when you go inside, you can't believe how nice it looks, it's just as modern as any building you would ever go in. Central Alabama Children's Birth Campus, again, the trade school look, look at it now. Each of the entrances now have columns, however, entryway is just much more inviting, nice landscaping, it looks like a college campus. This is Catered Campus of Calhoun. Enterprise of Ozark Campus, again, the trade school look, flat roof. That's after, sorry that trade blocks the entrance, but it's a new entrance, a new route, it really made a big, big difference in the effectiveness of the building. Some of the newer buildings we have around the state, Wallace Selma. Got Hume and Cater, Wallace Hansville. That's the interior of that building, very much, notice how they use the natural light, and they also have screening when the sun is not in the right position. Very, very good architecture, very thoughtful, well-planned, it's on the interior side, same building. Northeast Alabama, it's about, about two years old now, beautiful building, turned out really nice. Again, architectural team used natural light, makes the building more energy efficient, and also it's made it more pleasant, natural space, that's a beautiful state of the art. Johnson State, that was building that Calhoun and Cater, interior shot, nice interiors, nice gathering spots for students. Another building, Calhoun, interior shot, Central Alabama. Beautiful new building, really nice interiors, this building's used a lot by business and industry and the local community, they've put their best foot forward. It really helps with community relations to have a nice, nice building that's so well furnished. See through the windows there, the robotic section of a building, it's great state, Huntsville. Nice interior shots, you can see the pile of services down the ground floor, and steps, and the library, even a lot, it's very modern and attractive. And then we have some buildings that are being evaluated because they're really past their prime, useless. Central Alabama, Library Building, this is a multi-story building, started having problems with ceiling, either plaster or what was perceived actually to be, feared to be asbestos, started raining down on the books every morning, had to clean this white powder off their books. Also, when this building was built, the technology, it's had a boiler system, the chill water and hot water piping was placed in the slab between each floor. That's not so bad, except they use galvanized pipe. Galvanized pipe didn't last, and so this building started rusting apart, leaking, and once you have leaks in a concrete slab, this, you know, you just can't repair them. So you can see these windows that are open, they've been open for years, they wouldn't close, they were failing. You can see rust coming through the, through the stone there on the side of the building. Fractal column starting to deteriorate, this one actually, you can see the rebar in the one to the right of it, you can see where it's starting to scale and fragment. This is the interior shot, one, there's actually two pictures, one on the left, you can see around that HVAC, you can see how the plaster is starting to drop off the ceiling. To the right, when this plaster fell, it revealed that there was a water problem everywhere, put everything up in there with rust in the walls, you know, water's coming down the wall, the plaster was letting go, again, rust in the ceiling. So this building was evaluated by the architectural team, and I think we'll probably have to take this one down if it really can't be saved. Front pockets we have on, these are just a few of them, this is Wallace Dorton, this building's just in the foundation stage, they just have started, it's going to be a beautiful asset to their facility down there. This building is practically finished at Southern Union, El Pollo, beautiful building, let's see the under construction. This is the interior shot, notice the graphics up high, the gears, very nice touch by the architect, manufacturing, it's very appropriate, nice quote there by Henry Ford. Shows some interior shots, all this space is very flexible, it can, whatever the demands of industry and business are, they can quickly adapt this workspace, start training programs for, you know, whatever's required. It's a really, really fine building. So what we have as board trustees, we have $1.1 billion in buildings and land. It's quite an inventory, this is just a snapshot of some of the stuff we have, there's a lot of really fine work done by our facilities people. We've got, we've got people in maintenance departments there, because the budgets are literally keeping things together with baling wire and duct tape, but they do a really good job, and the thing that I've been so impressed with in the last five years in this position is how many dedicated people there are that work for our schools. These, these facility managers and maintenance people, they feel like they own those schools, and they worry about them, and they do their very, very best to keep them running efficiently. One of the things that we've done is try to help them in that process, teach them about maintenance and things that can, that can be done that can make their buildings even more manageable and less expensive to own. We work with Alabama Building Commission, the Building Commission is charged to all state construction, they do code review inspections that, you know, straight the contracts. And the Alabama Building Code applies to state buildings and structures, schools, public and private, hotels, motels, motion picture theaters. All the forms that you see related to a construction project once it's started, all that comes from Alabama Building Commission, they supervise all that. In general, the technical staff supervises, administers, inspects construction improvement projects for state agencies and departments, Alabama Community College System, DSCA and similar authorities. ABC provides periodic inspections of locally funded K-12 public school projects, and is authorized to inspect any project under due definition of state building code, including colleges and universities. This is just code Alabama, it's, you know, adopted 1975 by the Building Commission. Now, Alabama Community College System follows Alabama Building Commission, recommends guidelines for selection and design of professionals, and that's architects, engineers, commissioning agents, who go through, could use their guidelines, it's all uniform, all state agencies use it. Our building commissioning for new buildings about, over, over two and a half years ago, after much frustration with the condition of buildings that we were getting at final, final inspection or substantial completion, we're getting brand-new buildings that had 20 pages of punch list items, mechanical, I mean, things that didn't work. Contractor has 30 days to get those things rectified, and then there's a one-year inspection, when it, at the end of one year, I kept seeing over and over again, all these items were never addressed, and after the one year, contractor's gone, nobody really is that interested in helping you, and our facilities people were left with a brand-new building that didn't function. Some of them, we've been able to straighten out and have them function, some of them, there's some things that are built into the design that can't be fixed, and we just have to work around it, it's very challenging. So I started exploring, what, how can we get a better system for getting a building that's what we're asking for, what we're paying for? And I discovered building commissioning. Now, building commissioning is new to Alabama, it's not new to the rest of the world. All the federal projects are commissioned, core engineers, I mean, all around the world, people are commissioning buildings, it's very, very much similar, I'll just tell you, I, I worked five years for the Koreans, I worked for Hyundai Motor Corporation, and when we built a new car, before the engine went in the car, it was bench tested, it was cranked and run. Before the car got to the dealer, it went to a test track, went through a very intensive, all kind, hundreds of tests to make sure it's qualified to go to the dealer and be sold. That's sort of a form of commissioning, you wrist-watch, it goes through all kinds of tests before it's ever marketed to you. Well, what happens with new buildings in Alabama, up until now, is we had thousands of items going into a building, all kinds of components assembled by all kinds of subcontractors, and these were custom buildings, each one of them's different. We assemble these buildings, and then we have final inspection or substantial completion, and you turn on all the switches and you just hope everything works. They don't, folks, they don't work, and that's not a good way to build a building. So now we're hiring commissioning agents, they start with our architectural team, they work through the design phase and the construction phase, and they test all these things before they're installed. So, final inspection, the punch list is less than a page, everything works. They have really good training, mandated with commissioning, very good training for the maintenance staff, because with our new buildings, with all the energy codes now, our buildings are very technical, and mixing and bringing in outside air, because the buildings are a lot tighter now, they don't leak. It's, it's very important to make sure that you manage the buildings, we haven't been managing our buildings. Now we have the technology to do it, and with commissioning, we're getting buildings that, when they're handed over to us, it's what we paid for that work. And commissioning agents, they, they don't just leave you after the building's finished, they set everything, they set all the set points, and this is more than just HVAC, they test the walls for air filtration, of course, roofs, envelope, all that, you know, hot water, it's all made sure that it's as energy efficient as it can be and it's functional. And in the design phase, working with the design team, they make sure that all these components are going to talk to each other. We've had projects where new buildings were finished or renovated, and they had some existing controls, and the new controls, they didn't integrate, they didn't talk to each other. So at this end of the building, it's 10 degrees hotter than at this end. So building commissioning has been a wonderful thing, we've been commissioning all our new projects, and also we've started... Uh, we've been commissioning all our new projects, and also, we've started commissioning our innovations. This, uh, building commissioning is a quality-based process, documented confirmation of building systems for plan, design, install, tested, operated, and maintained by clients or owners of project requirements. How novel is that? Experience has shown that a building that is not commissioned will cost eight to twenty percent more to operate than a commissioned building. Now, we own our buildings for fifty-plus years, folks, and so, when you build a new building and you own it for fifteen years, and you look at a hundred percent of the cost, twenty-five percent is the construction of the building, seventy-five percent is ownership. So, with commissioning, we're gonna get buildings to perform better, have better in, in indoor quality, you're not gonna have all this constant, turn the thermostat up and down, because these buildings really work. You have lower energy cost, the equipment works more efficiently, it's not running wide open all the time, so it's not wearing out. So, it's gonna, it's, it's really been a miraculous change for us. This is a little case study, uh, this is the Shell State Community College. This, uh, this is very interesting. It's a twenty-year-old facility, it's an all-electric facility. Maintenance staff called me, they said, you know, our equipment's getting old, and we're thinking about making some changes. We got a great utility rate from Alabama Power Company, because we're all electric. We don't wanna lose that, but we also don't wanna just use electricity, if gas is better, or, you know, geothermal or whatever, we need some help. We don't, we don't know what's the best way for us to go. I said, put out our RFP for a commissioning agent, this is the sort of thing they work with. They did, they hired a commissioning firm, came in, and they did, uh, investigation, this is what they diagnosed, what they worked on. This is only thirty percent of the bill, uh, they've done so far. And, uh, these discoveries that they made, the issues they addressed, I don't get too technical, I'm taking my weave, but these are just standard things that you would do. Look at this, folks, thirty thousand dollars in two months. Thirty thousand dollars. Just by going through the equipment, putting in the right set points, understanding how the buildings are operating, you know, you're building a new building, and this is gonna be a classroom that's gonna use Monday through Friday. Five years later, some changes, just in the classroom, in the morning, it's only used three days a week. If you don't go back and set those controls, the heating and cooling's coming on just like the building's full of people when it's not. So, going through with commissioning agent, going through all these, uh, going through the whole building and resetting all that stuff, they picked up thirty thousand dollars in just two months. And now, when they complete the other seventy percent, I think the eighty-five thousand is gonna go way up. So that's what building commissioning's doing for us, you can do it on a new building, you can do it on existing buildings, but it's, it's imperative, the cost is nothing compared to what our buildings are costing. Payback is really quick, this is less than a year. And that's all I have today. Yes, sir Chuck.
Frank, is this part of the architectural sculptural work, or is this a third party that's coming in and doing the...
Great question Chuck. Your building commission, the commissioning agent should always be hired by the owner as a third party, uh, never should be hired by the contractor or the architect. What, what I've seen is if, if they're, if they're not looking to the owner for their paycheck, they're working for the contractor or architect, it's just a different dynamic, and we don't get our money to work. There always should be a third party direct contact with, with the owner.
Frank, this has cost above and beyond what you have in the ABC schedule for design team.
It is.
But, you, I'm sure you see payback for the investment in a very short period of time?
Very short. It's usually two, two and a half years, sometimes depending on the complexity of the project, it could be as much as five years. If we're gonna own the building for fifty years, it's really a no-brainer. It's the way, I mean, everybody's doing it all over the world, and I don't know why we're so late to the game. A lot of states is mandated by law. In Mississippi, um, I actually got to meet with the architectural team that did a case study on the building, it was a community college building, uh, about a ten or eleven million dollar project. The building failed before it ever opened. Because of politics, uh, they decided to repair the building, it should've been bulldozed, I mean, I could just go on with all the horrible things that happened, but, um, at the end of the day, four years later, they did open the building, twenty-five million dollars later. Uh, but I, I met with architects and the commissioning team that helped them repair that building, and it was just incredible. And after that incident, they passed the law, all state buildings were now commissioned, and, uh, it's a, it's a great process. And I'd be glad to, and I know we've got a subcommittee on, uh, infrastructure, and anytime y'all want to meet and go over this stuff up, I could talk all day about it. I know the chancellor's forward hearing about this, every time he sees me, I'm talking about commissioning, but it's just made a huge difference for us.
Yes, sir. Uh, is the commissioning team part of the original sculptural design team with the school or the architect, or do they come in totally after the project is completed?
That's, that's another great question. Um, in Georgia, I got a call from, uh, my counterpart in Georgia, and he said, you know, we got state mandated commissioning, we're not having very good results, but I keep hearing what y'all are doing, and he said, what, what am I doing wrong? And I said, well, explain to me how you're doing your projects. And he said, well, we hired an architect, we designed the building, we hired a contractor to build the building, and then we bring in the commissioning agent. And I said, well, I can tell you we're not having good results. You should hire your commissioning agent the day you hire your architect. They should work together as a team to design the building and make sure, and listen to what the owner's requirements are, which is most important. Sit in, sit in those meetings and listen to what the, what the owner's asking for. Now, an architect, when he's in a meeting, he's gonna hear things in his world. Commissioning agent is a, is a registered engineer, he's mechanical, he's hearing things differently maybe than the architect, and so, when they're gathering all that information on the front end, he's gonna help the owner get what they ask for. Not that the architect wouldn't, but he's just looking at it from a different vantage point. And it's, um, I've had contractors call me, when the first building we commissioned, Dr. Campbell listened to me and decided that he'd give it a go, and we did that beautiful new building up at, uh, Northeast. We commissioned that building, when I went to the first OAC owner, architect contractor meeting, uh, the contractor was not happy, because this was something new, he was scared, he was, you know, leery of what we were about to do. That same contractor, when we finished the project, called me and said, I got two things to say. He said, as a taxpayer in Alabama, thank you for commissioning the buildings, and as a contractor, thank you because you've made my job easier. He said, I've got all these subcontractors on the job, they all look busy, I assume they know what they're doing, but he said, well, that third-party commissioning agent looking over their shoulder, it's not a gotcha thing, but the commissioning agent is guiding them to do the right thing. Put built, uh, windows in buildings properly. We got brand-new buildings that water comes around the windows, I mean, they're two years old. You know, we can't have that anymore. So, commissioning has really paid off, and yes, they start with the design team day one. Not, and you won't get your tuition, your money if you hire anything. I mean, they, they can help, just like we've helped at Shell State on a twenty-year-old building, big help, but they need to start with the design team, and work together as a team.
Anyone else, any questions for, for Mr. Barnes?
I would just like to say that to encourage you, um, with this, this effort to institute commissioning agents, anything that can make us better stewards of what we've been entrusted with by the citizens of Alabama.
Absolutely.
I don't mean that just as lip service, I'm just telling you, we, we've just gotta, gotta utilize everything we've got and just be good stewards of the fact that we're doing it.
Well, I, I, I just wanna say this, you know, we're all taxpayers, and of course, what's going on across the street, the budgets are squeezed, there's not a lot of money, but this is one thing that can save us money. If we manage our buildings, we can put that money back into education, and we just haven't done it. People didn't think about it, and all our buildings were built with no insulation, I mean, no energy code. So, we got a big challenge, but our guys are doing a great job. I really appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. I can tell you, this is very informative. The next thing is, we're all, we're, you know, we're just trying to, we're back in town, we're having a special session, a lot going on across the street, so, like, yesterday. And I've asked Jimmy Baker to give us an update on that, and also talk just about legislative processes and, uh, just the community college system.
You know, we still don't have a budget. But the governor says he probably will sign it after he's reviewed it. And you'll learn from me that, uh, I'm not real gifted in the media business. I kinda like to talk, I'll send you plenty to read, you'll get copies of the budget, you'll get copies of the bills that passed, and there's a significant bill that passed dealing with the modification of the rolling reserve, which means there will be more money available than would have been without that modification. Uh, I guess, I don't wanna just sum it up, but I would say that, before we get any deeper into it, actually, I think education came out better than one would have expected at the beginning of the session. Whether it's the regular session, or the first special, or the last special. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about how to fund the general fund budget, and we talked about that one day, or I talked with you about it, about the necessity to fund general fund. Because it does have an impact on education as well, uh, those kids who are not in good health do not do well in school. But, uh, it's been an interesting process, and I want to thank the presidents. We have regularly called them and asked them to talk to their legislators and make the case that we wanna be reasonable, but we must protect the education dollars, because we need those dollars in the school systems. And in the colleges across the state, and for other programs that are funded out of that. Uh, and actually, since the budget, or the legislation, well, they signed it out last night, middle of the, uh, afternoon, evening, rather. And I will, as I said, I will get to you, along with all the presidents, the breakouts of the budget and of the effect of the rolling reserve. In fact, the way it finally ended up with the use tax, that was the one that was talked about the whole time, and talked about transferring the use tax, which at the time amounted to about two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars out of the trust fund into the general fund. And there was always the argument, well, do the obligations that already exist based on those taxes go with that or not? And so, that was part of the debate. We ended up transferring out eighty million dollars from the education fund to the general fund, and splitting the obligations on a percentage basis. So, we really ended up better than I thought, and better than most other people that were working diligently, and I'm not talking about everybody walking around the hall crying. I'm talking about those that were really looking at the numbers and trying to figure out what we could do. Uh, we, we came out in pretty good shape, and I think you'll see that once you get the analysis, the budget analysis. Uh, the other part of it, the rolling reserve was amended. As you know, the rolling reserve was passed, oh, gosh, I don't recall the exact year, but it's been about five, six years now, well, six or seven years now. And it required that we maintain a certain, or commit a percentage of the total revenues that come in to a reserve fund until that reserve fund reached twenty percent of the appropriation bill. Well, twenty percent of a, of six billion dollar budget's a pretty good chunk of change. And not, it, it would be very rare that we ended up in a position where we needed the full twenty percent of that as a reserve fund. So, that has been amended, the basis for which you can project growth, they dropped some of the years that were the worst years out, and only require, uh, instead of fifteen years, fourteen years, an average of that, to kind of look with a projected average. The other part is they reduced that twenty percent to seven percent. So, what all of that means is this next budget year, and I don't want the people to get too excited, because I'm gonna talk about some things we need to get excited about. But this next budget year, there should be more than the normal amount of growth plus additional money put into the education budget. Now, I don't wanna project the number, but I'm, I'm telling you that it probably could be upped as much as two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred million dollars. Uh, that's significant. But it's not that significant when you stop and realize, and, and here's where I want you to think, you know, budget's passed, it's over. Eight, uh, the sixteen budget is intact, we know where we are right now. But there's some issues that we must deal with, and it's something that I want you to be seriously thinking about. There has not been a compensation increase to our employees in, I probably could ask and get it for sounding, seven, eight years, eight years. That is not acceptable. We must do everything we can to deal with the compensation issue. There's another embedded issue in compensation that we have to deal with, and looking around, I could point out some presidents. It is not an issue, can we hire the skilled, trained instructors anymore? We're struggling to retain the ones we already have, because they can go out, or there, many of their students walk out of their classes after they complete, and make more money than the instructors make. And that's not an acceptable position for us to be in. So, we're gonna have to deal with the compensation. The chancellor has commissioned us to proceed with working on developing a compensation schedule so that we can have some flexibility to deal with those issues. That will come to you at a later date, but before the next budget is, a budget request is reached that you would present to the governor's office. The other issue that I think is so important that we get focused on, around this town, and this is not a criticism, please, but you could spend two-thirds of your time attending a meeting talking about workforce development. And if that generated jobs, that would be a good thing. Uh, we would just be loaded with jobs if that generated jobs. I'm for the process, I'm for the committees, I'm for all of that, and I love the districts and all of the talk about it. It's time to put some legs to the deal. We are working diligently to put together some models so that we can have a program. The chancellor and I met with the pro tem the other day, and told him we would deliver something to them before they started putting budgets together the next time. We must get into the business at a different level than we currently are of training people to fit the jobs that exist out there. And that's what the committees are working on, to try to identify the jobs. We think we know, not just we think we know, we know what a lot of those jobs are, and it's not an impossibility to put together and craft programs to serve them. It is unless you have the resources to do it. You don't equip some of the facilities that need to be equipped in the expense of doing so unless we have the resources. So, I, I won't, I, I, the legislative process, I guess that was my topic. You know, as a kid, I worked in the piggly wiggly, and you brought to Alabama, I think I'm semi-retired from there, and I was a specialist in the butcher shop. And I ground the sausage, and I've heard the legislative process defined as that, and I was pretty good at grinding the sausage. And I watched some of these guys cross the street, I'm not sure if they figured it out yet. But, uh, we must do a better job with the legislative relations. We need to provide you the information, and we, as a collective group, start talking to our legislators about what our program is going to be next year, and we must do that by or before Thanksgiving. We can't be too late. We're committed to providing you with that, and I think the great thing about the current structure of this board, we have a variety of experiences of people that are in a variety of trades. And do a variety of things that you can have an influence because you're believable. When you want to talk, Chuck, with someone about what it takes to get this done, you're believable. And I've just seen the now, Chuck, since he was looking at me like he was serious. But, uh, there, there is, I think we are on the cusp of a great opportunity in this state. The vice chancellor, the chancellor and I sat in a meeting down in Mobile, what, three... The vice chancellor and the chancellor and I sat in a meeting down in Mobile, what, three weeks ago, two weeks ago maybe? With all the ma, I would, I say all, a majority of all of the major employers in that area. We had to say 20 people in the room, 20, 25 people in the room. There were HR people as well as others. And in that single location out on Brooklyn Hill, we heard them express if we had the skilled people that we could hire, we could probably increase employment in the mobile area just out of that group by as much as 6,000 to 7,000 people. And we're talking about jobs that pay from 20 to 50 bucks an hour for skilled employees. That's what solves the problem in the state of Alabama. Jobs cures a lot of evils and a lot of despair. And that's what we need to be about. So I probably hadn't told you everything I should have told you, but I want you to understand. Our mission today forward is to get ready for what we must do by or before Thanksgiving so that we have a program in place that we in the community college system, as well as you as a board, fully understand, comprehend, and we're ready to go to battle with it. So with that, I'll, I'll stop preaching and talking or whatever I'm doing. But I feel so strongly that we have an opportunity that we've never had before to make a statement and to solve the problems of a lot of people in this state. And that really, we are the only solution to a lot of the problems for a lot of people in this state. Getting trained and getting a living wage makes the difference in a household. I'll, I'll try to respond to questions if you have any.
Any questions to ask for Dr. Baker?
I just want to thank you for what you're doing and the chancellor's doing in regard and in that regard. And you hit the nail on the head. If we can execute in that area, it's, it will change lives in the state.
I would like to mention, I think I have, have here in the back stand-up half, he's somebody you probably don't see or hear that much. Hal helps in the legislative process. He's actually an employee at CAC over at Central. But he devotes his time during the legislative process to be in my eyes and ears in the halls of the legislature. And that can get old and it can get tiring and sometimes unpleasant. But he does a great job and I appreciate every minute of it. Thanks, chancellor.
I'll brag on Jimmy Baker for just a minute. I don't think there's anybody better in this state and probably in the entire region when it comes to governmental affairs. That is a, that's a real art and I've, it's been a real privilege to work with him and learn from him. So I'm very grateful to him. Can you give a report?
I do, I just have a, I have a little announcement I'd like to, I'd like to make. One, look, Frank, in front of you, the substantive change document that was sent to Southern Association, the Commission on Colleges for the Change of Governance. Uh, this, uh, this document is very, very involved. And I'd like to recognize Dr. Linda Coleridge, but if you'd stand up for just a moment. Uh, she was the, the main architect of this. She pulled everyone together and, uh, this is like writing a dissertation. I mean, it is, it is very involved. And Linda, who worked with you on that document?
Dr. Rich, Dr. Bruce, all the friends that worked with me, we received, you know, John, I think that's me. And, uh, Dr. Jimmy James, Mortar Shaws, Dr. Edish, I came from Edish. And Dr. Mortar, you can ask.
Thanks, thanks to you and your entire team. I can't emphasize enough how detailed this report is and how much time it, it, it saves. And I'm just very grateful for, for that. So each of you should have a copy and there are extra copies for the presidents on the, on the card if you'd like to pick one up on the way, on the way out. Also would like to make a couple of, a couple of introductions. Please introduce, just ask them to stand briefly, please introduce, uh, Mr. Jeff Rhodes. Jeff, if you would stand. Uh, Jeff is the acting president at Reed State and we appreciate your service there. Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Uh, Elena Robinson here. She may be minding my office in any event, that's not very fair. I'm here introducing her and she, anyhow, she has been recently, uh, become full-time in private school licensure as, as a secretary. We're very grateful to her for, for her service. Uh, Fremont Graves, Fremont, if you would stand a moment. Uh, Fremont is the executive director for information technology here at the system. So he oversees all of technology and, and we're just delighted to have him on board as well. Thank you, Fremont. And Janet Martin, I know Janet is not, not here today, but Janet is the interim executive director for marketing and public relations. And she, uh, she started earlier this, uh, earlier this week. And Elena, I think you stepped in on time, this is Elena. Uh, Elena, we're very pleased to have you, have you here and thank you for your service in the private school licensure area. So Paige, if I missed anybody, is that the local list? Something any event, if you have a chance, if you would welcome each of them, they're great, great additions. Now, I want to brag on someone Jimmy just bragged on because I want to. And I also want to brag on Hal and the job he does. I know, I know, you're getting, I'm just really pleased you're here. Again, I can't express enough how much time and energy he invests across the street. I know you heard that just a moment ago. Uh, but if you had a list of tasks that we send over to him, it would be a list that would probably take, should take two or three people to accomplish, but somehow he takes all care of all of that. So please know publicly how grateful we are to you, Hal, for the, the great job that you do. So, um, that's my report.
Very good. Autumn 11th, announcing the date and location of the next meeting. We will reassemble after our adjournment at 1:00 T.M. In the president's conference room for our work session. Then our next regular meeting is October 20th, NAM, at TA Lawson State Community College. So it'll be in Birmingham. That'll be our first off-site meeting. I'm looking forward to that. I know that the trustees are. And, um, appreciate you bringing that forward, chancellor, and appreciate that suggestion, that idea. And we look forward to visiting other institutions in the system and becoming more familiar with all the great colleges that we have in the community college system in Alabama. We've got a lot to be proud of and just the potentials there to even do bigger, better things for the citizens of Al, citizens of Alabama.
Any trustees?
I was just going to say, just announced that we do have a bunch of them for the, for the little place.
Trustees, any of you have any other business, come before the board? We need to term this in.
Uh, I, I guess.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And Roger, do you want to address that?
I'm glad you signed, I know the papers are up, I think the whole pile. Sorry, sorry, that was quite a lot.
Glad you told us. Anything else?
If not, we will stand adjourned.